It's not what happened today. Good, I'm glad you're there.
Father God, we come before as humble as we know how, God asking that you would bless, God, in the name of Jesus, bless every heart that's here, God. Allow us to make the right choice, God, concerning the county, in the name of Jesus and our areas, God. We ask that you be with us, be with those that have authority to us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and limited in its power.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Henry County Board of County Commissioners being held on Tuesday, April 18th, at 5:00 p.m. in the City Commission Chambers in Clueston, Florida. And attendance are Chairman Mitchell Wills, Class Chair Emma Byrd, Commissioner Gerald Harris, Commissioner Michael Swindle, Commissioner Carson Turner, County Administrator Charles Chapman, County Attorney Mark Flat, and Clerk Margaret Butler.
All right, good evening, everyone. If you wish to speak tonight, if you would, get a form and fill them out and give it to Ms. Butler, and she'll get them up here to us, and we'll get you as we get there. Seeing nothing on our bids, we have to consider agenda.
May I take that?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Byrd. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Under awards and appearances, have the health centers, Dr. Wilhelmina Lewis Lyons.
Good evening, Board. How are you all?
Good, how are you?
Good. Well, Janet B. Taylor is the name, and I'm sorry, Jennifer, I gave you the wrong spelling of Ms. Lewis's first name, it's L-E-W-I-F. I apologize to her. And we asked to come this afternoon for one reason, but you all know me, I have to have something else before we do that. And the Chair did give me permission to do that. First, I want to say thank you all for all the support that you all give to the Brown Sugar Festival for this year and every year that you've done, so we really appreciate it. But this year is the fortieth year that they've had this undertaken, and it's going to be a grand retro undertaking, and we're going to have a real opening program this year, and Mario Diaz-Billard is going to be our speaker. And he's asking if we could get the city commissioners, the county commissioners, and the elected officials to come be onstage with them on Saturday morning. So if it's any way possible, if you all could put that on your agenda, I know Carson will be on his horses.
Saturday, 5th of May.
Saturday, May 5th. The parade starts promptly at 10:00. We wish you would be in the parade, and then from the parade, the parade is going to end at the site where we're going to have the program, and 11:30, we hopefully, we're going to start. But if we could honor his wishes, I would certainly appreciate it and look forward to seeing you all. And if you're going to be in the parade, just call and let me know so that we could, let's hope we could do a spot for you, and then we'll be able to introduce you with the...
We're riding in the parade.
We're riding in the parade, okay.
In the NG truck, so if we break down again, maybe it'll help.
Oh, I forgive you, I forgive you. I forgive you. It was good. Okay, well, I'll put you all down for a spot and thing, and then you all will be there for the opening. I'll pass that on to him, because for some reason, he called last night and wanted to know if you all was going to be there, so the city commission, I think, has agreed. Now, what we got on the program for was that I'm part of the Board of Directors for Florida Community Health Center, and this is Nardina Johnson, who is the City Center Manager here for our Clueston Community Health Center. And we are more than honored this afternoon to present to you one of our own. There's a history, and I'm going to let her tell it, because sometimes it's better for people to tell on themselves than somebody else to second thought it. But she's originally here from Clueston, and I want her to give you her story, how she's came full circle with Community Health Center. Nardina and I here just supporting her.
Thank you so much, Ms. Janet, and thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me this time. It's such an honor to be back in Clueston today. As Ms. Janet said, this is my home. I was born and raised in Clueston, Florida, and when Florida Community Health Centers opened 46 years ago, I was on the playground in front of what they called the dome. I was going there with my mom for health care, and many years later, now, I return and honored to be the CEO for Florida Community Health Centers, which has been in Clueston for all of that time. We now have 12 sites around Lake Okeechobee, but it's very important that we continue to maintain a strong presence and that we continue to increase our presence here, because our mission is to provide cost-effective care, which means affordable care for all people regardless of their socioeconomic status. We want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for the support that they've given us over the years. In 2013, we came and asked your support as we were obtaining a grant for renovations that allowed us to expand pediatric services as well as increased dental services to community citizens who might not otherwise be able to afford care. And because of the support of this board, we were able to do so. And recently, we hosted a chamber open house at that location to show some of those expanded services. And so I just wanted to, again, thank you, to let you know that we are here as committed community partners, and if there is anything at all that I or our organization can do for yourselves or the citizens and your constituents, please do not hesitate to contact either Ms. Janet, Ms. Nardina, or myself, and we'll be glad to answer that call. We appreciate your help to us, and we are here committed to be of help to Clueston and Henry County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for bringing your talents back home. Appreciate that, thank you.
Can I say that Ms. Lewis is the same age as my sister? And I remember all through growing up, Ms. Lewis has always been impressive, and she's even more so today, so thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And tell Jennifer I said that.
I will, I was going to get there. Wait, just tell her.
Okay, moving on to the second part of that, Rob Shave is here from Gray Robinson tonight. Tell you enough to report. Probably tired of seeing all of us today, huh?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, for the record, Rob Shave, thank you very much for having us here. I'd like to introduce Chris Spencer, also from Gray Robinson. Chris would like to kick off our summary with an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for having us over here. Again, my name is Chris Spencer with Gray Robinson. I'm based in our Tampa office. Quick summation of the legislative session, which ended just about a month ago. Every year, every legislative session pretty much has its own theme. There's always a different area of focus that each session usually has. This year was no different. As we approached legislative session at the end of the hurricane season, there was the general thought that this would be the hurricane session for hurricane response and recovery. There was a select committee convened in the Florida House of Representatives with the idea of trying to pull together funding appropriation issues that would be specific to hurricane response and recovery policy prerogatives to help with response and preparedness for future hurricanes. And that kind of seemed like the way that this was going to shape up as we approached the start of this legislative session. Nationally, as the Me Too movement began to spread from Hollywood to corporate America, there was two high-profile state senators resigned, and as a result of that, the focus shifted over towards ethics reforms and what looked like to be included within the ethics broader discussion, a lot of proposals that really modified and could have been seen as an assault also on local governments, counties, cities, school districts, et cetera. There is a, the focus shifted towards that direction as we entered session with already a pretty constrained budget outlook of reduced revenues from the hurricane, reduced revenues also from various different issues that come up during every couple of years, some issues with collection of revenues, with different aspects in the budget. So we're coming into a hard budget year, and then on February 14th, the shooting took place, and that changed everything during the legislative session. The response from that was, as you've all seen, a very comprehensive package that was pulled together that included $400 million in spending for school safety, for mental health screening and treatment, and some firearm reform legislation. All of that combined really created a very tumultuous legislative session where, starting from hurricanes, moving to ethics reform, and then finishing with a significant budget proposal that impacted both education and mental health screening, it really made for an interesting legislative session that really saw a lot of local spending kind of curtailed to defer to the overall package that ended up being passed by the legislature towards the end of session. With that in mind, for more specifics about some of the issues that were discussed during the session, I'll kick it back over to Rob, and he'll go into more detail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Specifically, the two appropriations requests made on behalf of Henry County. One was the four corners wastewater and water proposal. The other is, was, of course, the force main, you know, running sewer lines from the county airport out to the Clueston wastewater treatment plant. Unfortunately, due to lots of circumstances, we were not able to get those funded in Tallahassee. We are looking into several other avenues for, you know, possibilities for the completion of those projects. In addition to what a difficult and rough session it was, we did have some significant success in the areas of economic development, and specifically with the Job Growth Grant Fund. We are hopeful that our application to the Department of Economic Opportunity will be looked upon favorably. We are waiting for a final decision from the Governor's Office on that, and we'll keep you posted as things develop there. In addition to that, there's an opportunity zone program through the Department of Economic Opportunity. We are advocating strongly to the Governor and to the Department of Economic Opportunity that Henry County be included in its entirety in this opportunity zone program. The Governor's Office and DEO have until April 20th to make a final decision, which actually is an extension of their original deadline, so we are very hopeful that the Governor's Office will look upon us favorably there, and we will certainly keep you posted on that going forward. With that, Commissioners, if there are any questions?
I think you answered them today. Did everybody have, everybody made...
Anybody get a chance to get that today?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you pretty much. Got what the will of the Board is today as we were speaking with you and what we're looking to do in the future, so we appreciate you being here and making the presentation, and we look forward to the future being brighter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we move on, I'd just like to make a couple of comments, just rounding out for the benefit of all five members, is that the discussion with the Gray Robinson team today led us to some several follow-up items, one of which is looking at strategies to do a consolidated legislative platform by working through our local delegation, particularly with Senator Kathleen Pasadomo. As her stock continues to rise into Senate presidency, we definitely would want to show our support. It's not a foregone conclusion, although she is a very strong candidate for Senate President in two years. The second item that I wanted to make sure that I rounded out with all of you today is that we need to take a look at, over the next couple of weeks, line item appropriation strategies versus programmatic grant funding strategies for our various projects, what projects may fit better under line item appropriation, what projects may fit better under grants, particularly since we know we will be dealing with a new governor come November, and that this next year is going to be a little bit of a litmus test as we move forward. And then the last item is just to stay in constant communication, make sure that we're following our reports with you consistently, and to get your feedback early and often on some of the priorities so that we stay on the straight and narrow, as you will, because things can get a little sideways as we go through legislative session, there's a lot of distractions. So we want to make sure we boil down our priorities, make it very simple but yet effective, and to make sure that we're putting all the energy that you require into that priority list.
Anyone have any questions?
See, they do know that they are working with the EDC on the grant process and the same firm.
Yes, sir. Gray Robinson has been retained by the Henry County Economic Development Council to do very similar work but focusing on economic development-specific initiatives. I don't know if they would like to enter anything specific on that or stay anything.
Y'all are just working on it, right? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, work hard.
Yes, sir, you have our word.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. None of the public hearings, correspondence. FYI, we have the Engineering Department, Shane Parker. Should we move on to staff reports?
I will yield the floor to Ms. Jennifer Davis, Deputy County Administrator, for any questions, but the item before you is to approve and adopt the Henry County Grants Administration Manual. With some of our more aggressive posture in filing for grants, we found that it was needed, that we set a baseline of operations and protocols when it comes to grants administration. That's the birthing of this document that you're reviewing tonight. There are some amendments that Ms. Jennifer Davis may have to make on the record.
So, for the record, we just want to tweak the language, subject to County Attorney approval and some other minor corrections that needed to be made, but the most important thing is for requiring Board approval for grants. So I wanted to read in the record what we wanted to tweak the language to and make sure that you all were agreeable. For grants not requiring matching funds, the county administrator... I'm sorry, my phone keeps, it's the jury line, and it keeps calling me, and it won't stop. I'm sorry. I know, but it keeps, it keeps calling me. Okay, I'm sorry. The county administrator may apply without Board approval. Board approval shall be obtained of the grant agreement after it is received, subject to County Attorney approval. For grants requiring matching funds, Board approval is required to apply. If the exact amount, match amount, is known at the time of the application, sorry, the Board may, I'm sorry, the Board may at the same time authorize execution of the grant agreement after it is received, subject to County Attorney approval. If the exact match amount is not known, at the time of the application, Board approval shall be obtained of the grant agreement after it is received, subject to County Attorney approval. Sorry about that. So in other words, if it requires a match, it'll come before you. If it doesn't require a match, the Board, the county administrator can approve. If the match, if we don't know the amount of the match, it'll come back before you for acceptance. If we know the amount of the match when it comes before you the first time, we'll ask you to go ahead and approve all future documents, et cetera. So that's the gist of it.
Well, the main thing is the match part.
Yes, sir. I'm very sorry.
You did, okay.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
And just to be clear, there were some further changes, like editorial changes, corrections of wording that I've done, and so just if your approval will be subject to those changes being incorporated.
Motion made by Commissioner Turner, seconded by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion?
Do you have to do public hearing?
No.
Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the Port La Belle Utility System rate increase.
Mr. Chairman, I will yield the floor to Shane Parker, County Engineer. For the record, Shane Parker, County Engineer, this item before you is a permission advertised for public hearings for a new rate increase for residential water connections. Currently, we are spending more than we're receiving due to increased permit fees from the Port La Belle Community Development District, cost of the actual meters, and cost of labor to install said meters and make the connection.
And this is only for new resident?
New connections.
Okay.
So this will go from 110 to 250?
Well, it's going to be a public...
The tab charge. I didn't really get a clear understanding, because I looked back on the resolution that was approved in '04.
Right.
And that was an increase of $345, but I don't know, I don't know where you're settled at right now.
The total water charge right now for connection?
Is 1860.
Is 1860. It's going to increase by $345 on top of that.
So it's going to be 2455, correct?
Yeah, I didn't do the math, but yes, that sounds about right.
I'm looking at what you have here. So, so, so let me ask this, though, Mr. Chair. The 2455, that's not what, is that what a resident pays?
That's what a resident will pay when they make their connection.
You want water, you will. So that's what it costs to hook up?
To hook up, plant capacity.
One time.
One time.
Okay.
And City La Belle's $4,000.
Why is ours so much cheaper? If there's this $4,000, their volume would be greater than ours. It seems like on a price-per-unit basis, it would be.
It'd probably relate to their new plant and stuff. I mean, I didn't look at their analysis.
They just went through, so I imagine that's part of that, is covering the rebuild, different stuff, yeah.
A portion of that fee is charged for the bond issue on the USDA financing for the new water plant.
But on the other day, the whole price is breaking even, right?
We're actually losing, we're losing money right now. Port La Belle went up on their fee from $25 to $75, and then the new meters are more expensive now, so...
And then, and they, they got 50 under construction up to right now.
Is this not going to affect the commercial, just residential?
This is just, this is just a residential right now.
It's only for the new...
New construction.
New construction.
Well, new construction, I mean, there's building going on, so...
Just mainly all, there's a few commercial connections, but this is just for residential connection here.
Okay. Do we have a motion on that? Mr. Harris, have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second, my Madam Clerk. Any further discussion?
Chief, back on charge.
Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Chairman, the next item I have for you is Amendment Number 1 to the first amended and restated interlocal agreement relating to the establishment of the Florida Governmental Utility Authority, also known as FQAA. Henry County is a member for, as a reminder to the Commissioners, they have a service area in Henry County.
You just want us to approve us staying in it?
No, sir. I want you to...
Allowing the need and element to come in.
Well, not even allowing that, I just want your permission to approve, I want my staff report here, to approve this agreement to allow them to, FQA to...
Allow...
To include waste, solid waste collection on the water and sewer bill. Currently, the FQA's rules do not have it collecting solid waste. The City of Dunellen wanted FQA to take over their utility system, but their utility system, they bill for solid waste. The agreement among the FQA members does not allow such.
So we have to tweak that, and every member's going to have to vote on this?
Every other member county is voting this month. The Board of Directors for FQA, not the Board, the Board has approved it.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Turner, seconded by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Raise it to Mr. Lap.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, this item was in front of you in November. This is a defaulted CDBG mortgage where the occupant of the house passed away, and now we're dealing with a...
This is the one we were dealing with the Sons, correct?
Right.
And so we gave them a considerable, considerably good number to acquire the said property. The property was going to appraise that at a higher value. So in reading this, what I'm understanding is that they're, once again, not meeting the, so we're going to, we're going to, we're going to now hire outside counsel to go after acquisition of said property?
Right.
And then we'll put it back on the market?
Right.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Turner, seconded by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. This was November 14th, 2017. I want, I want this Board to hear me loud and clear, and I'll just be as blunt as I can be. There's a 100% correlation between blight, crime, poor performance in school, and every other negative connotation you can associate with that. I am in no way, shape, or form mad at staff. I don't think that we're not doing our job, but I would just challenge each of us individually to help lead a conversation about if we have, if we have areas that are becoming blighted or potentially down that path in our district, we ought to, we ought to have a very strong goal to help facilitate addressing those things. And I think that this is a prime example of November, we tried to do what we thought was the right thing. We had a good conversation about it. They missed the mark. It's now time for us to acquire and put this thing back on the market and hope that it goes back into, to use Commissioner Harris's term, gets back on the tax roll and continues to generate money for our, for our community, for our county. So that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is it a matter of record what the amount was that was given to the Sons?
Well, no, no money was given to them.
Not, I'm talking about for them to...
The settlement amount?
Yeah, sell it.
Right. It was, the balance on the loan is $31,200, and, and the concession that we, the Board agreed to was an $11,200 concession to just cut the balance to $20,000 and have them pay it off over two years in monthly payments of $833. And, and then they took some time, but they ultimately said they can't do that, they want, and they're not paying the taxes, they're not, they didn't want to, I told them they need to get insurance on it, because that would be a condition of us having a mortgage, and they didn't do that, and...
So they just have not complied, period.
And Commissioner Taylor, in my assessment of it, I mean, I don't know if that market would command it to cover that if they had a renter in there, but if it's not, it's right at it. I mean, it doesn't make any logical sense to me why this property, this family, isn't taking every step known to man to try to keep this thing, and I would just say that they're probably under duress, but it's not my job to worry about someone's personal finances. It's my job to try to help our communities. Yes, ma'am.
I haven't yet worked with Ma from this even before I was off the commission, because I'm sure, I didn't know they had not complied.
We got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Turner, and seconded by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, next one is the extensions of the local state of emergency. We've got 30th and 31st.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, seconded by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have Ms. McDavid that has turned in a form to speak today. Didn't see one of them.
There is an addition, sir.
All new ones. We'll come right back to that. Even highlighted that I missed it. Hello, Ms. McDavid, how are you?
I'm good. I want to thank everybody for letting us, letting me come and talk tonight, but we seem to have a problem in our neighborhood, and I'm doing the neighborhood watch. I've called Building and Zoning several times about a problem that we have, but if you looked out your window today and you saw your neighbor dipping raw sewage out of their septic tank, tell me what you would do.
Is this the same place? Is it the same one? Same place, same issue?
Exactly. It's been going on for over a year. He's been dipping sewage, raw sewage, for over a year. We live on a pit of water. I eat fish out of that pit, and I'm disgusted.
The heart of my...
I've called Building and Zoning, they've come out, absolutely nothing is done. This time, I called environmental people. Well, I called the Health Department, and they gave me their inspector. He told me that he had been out there and he had a plugged line. I said, "Well, then, why is this gentleman out there with his bucket dipping raw sewage out?" I said, "Something needs to be done." And not only that, I've heard several times, over and over and over again, about, "We don't want this neighborhood to be another Twin Lakes." Well, I've tried to comply, I've tried to help the Building and Zoning, I've called code enforcement. I called, two weeks ago, I saw a gentleman out there redoing his septic tank on a Saturday morning. My first key was, evidently, he's doing it when nobody's watching. So I called Building and Zoning, and I said, "I have, I want to check and see if these people have a permit." Okay, the young lady, the answer to the phone, I don't know what her name was, I didn't ask, I didn't care after what she said. I said, she said, "First of all, do you have an address?" I said, "No, but if you go east on Davidson Road, turn left on Shane, and right on Ridgell, it's the fourth house on the right." Assuming she had a map, that she could tell me that. There was no numbers on the trailer, but I've got a list of things that need to be taken care of, and I'm up to here.
On that one site? Or is that for the whole neighborhood? I think, I think the list is probably around Ridgell subdivision?
Yes.
Or is it Ridgell subdivision, Davidson Road, and Hookers Point Road?
Yes.
What, no, which one is it? All three of those, okay?
Yeah.
I bet my list is bigger than yours.
Well, you know, and we've often said, is code enforcement getting paid by the mile? Because they come in our neighborhood all the time, but I never see... Because they come in our neighborhood all the time, but I never seen any changes, and I've had it. I mean, what do we do? If you saw somebody in your, your neighborhood doing that, what would you do?
Just the same one where they were living in a boat?
Yes, yes.
I thought, I mean, even I asked, and I thought it was all taken care of and resolved, and. Commissioner Swindle?
And they're renting rooms also. I mean, right now, the inspector said, I'm going out there this morning, and if it hasn't been fixed, we are gonna have him move out of the house. We're gonna tell him he can't stay in the house. Well, when I came by at three-thirty, he was still in the house. Now, you know, I know nothing happens overnight, but this has been a year. Something needs to be done.
On the septic tank, that should be the health department.
Well, I called the health department. I talked to the inspector.
Yeah, they, they.
And he tells me, but where, who do I call? Who, who would you call?
Who else have you got to call?
Yeah.
And then the frustrations, rather, part of that is, and you know, and staff has the same issue. Staff, when staff sees it and we're still trying to get it taken care of, so we know that the frustration is even greater for someone in your capacity that's, that's complained and made the complaint more than once. So we've really, you know, we've talked about this a lot of times. We have to find the ends to these means. We keep going around it, but eventually you gotta, you gotta stop it. So we need to find out, where's the buck stop? I get it. Where's the stop? We need to find that out.
And, Mr. Chair, I mean, you know, I remember when she, when, when, when Ms. McDavid came the first time, and, I mean, I, I, I promised I could have gave her a post-it note and said, talk about this issue, this issue, and this issue, and we couldn't have matched up probably any better with our frustration points. Now here she is, you know, twelve months later, Ms. York is still as frustrated as the day is long. But I think that the, I think that the, the, if, if we were to ask staff blindly with none of this conversation having had, first of all, we were closing more cases than we are opening. But I will just tell you, and the constituents that I talk to, they do not feel that way, and I do not share that sentiment at either. I feel that there are, there are glaring issues on Main Street of my district, and I think that those issues have, have actually magnified. And, and I think that we are racing towards a poorer projection than a better projection of our community. And I'm not saying I have the answer. I don't, I don't know if there's a silver bullet out there. I think that it's a very uncomfortable conversation, and nobody, nobody wants code enforcement on them. They want it on their other backyard, but they don't necessarily want to be attached to who it is. But this lady right here and her neighbor, you can't have a bigger spine than what they're doing right now and coming up and saying, this is who it is. This is, this is where I live. By the way, put me on Facebook Live, stream me on Instagram, whatever you need to do, but I'm here to wave a flag with y'all and say that we have a problem. And I just think that, I'm not saying that y'all aren't agreeable to it. I think that we're all kind of singing from the same sheet of music a bit more these days. But I think that we need to have a more formidable meeting with, with our county administrator and say, just like we were talking about the other day, where we had, I don't know, was it thirty-nine properties that we're pushing into foreclosure? How are we gonna fix that? But when we have something like, this is a red flag, I will tell you, the email that I got following the initial meeting that she had was basically, I went by, I checked on it, it's being, it's being blown out of proportion. Now, that's a, that's a very quick synopsis of what was stated, but that's how I took it. And, and I was offended by the email, and, uh, you know, I said, I, I don't agree with this, and I think that there should be another follow-up investigation. And, and, and clearly, Ms. McDavid is frustrated, um, and I'm as just, I'm just as frustrated, but, you know, that I'm, I'm not gonna say I'm one of five, because I don't like that answer. Uh, I think that's a cop-out for doing nothing. But I will tell you right now, Ms. McDavid, I am failing Ridgetal subdivision. I, as Commissioner Turner, am failing Ridgetal subdivision. I'm failing Hookers Point Road, and those communities look worse today than what they did ten years ago when I came into as, as Commissioner Turner. And it's one of, it's one of my biggest platforms that I've said, you know, keep me in this seat. I want to keep your taxes low, and I want to make your neighborhood look better, and I want to help your children get educated, and I want to help facilitate job growth in this county, but I can't get it done.
Can I help?
Please, feel free.
So, uh, I'm crowding on five years on the commission, and I've heard this out of Commissioner Turner all five years, and now, um, a lot of them believe him, but I'm seeing it with my own eyes through the school system and through the communities, and let me tell you what. I'm, I love Fay McDavid, and, and I'm very sorry we're in the situation we're in, but staff, make no mistake, I don't want to hear this again. This cannot go on. I don't know where the laws stop. I don't know who's responsible. We've sat right here, and we've listened to the cases that's been closed. We've sat right here and said, do you need more manpower? No, we're being trained. This cannot continue. Is that clear enough?
I think it's, I think it's crystal clear.
And, and if we need to start putting our foot down, if, whatever we gotta do, I'm, I'm, I'm also offering, if you don't have the tools, let us know what tools you need. If you need more manpower, let us know what that is. Do we need to address the judges or whatever? We're, I'm throwing the blanket out there. But, and this is not, this is a single situation. Now, we probably can't cure everything on the list at one shot, you know, we all understand that. But there's no reason for somebody to be on the same situation and the same neighbor going through the same thing, and nothing's happening. And we're a year later, and we still don't have resolve or a better situation. How are we gonna promote our county and EDC and school and job growth and anything else if we can't do better than that? Whether it's on Hookers Point Road, Ridgetal subdivision, Montura, or where it is. Please tell me we're gonna get better and get better overnight.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, if I might, I will be personally following up with Ms. McDavid. If you could just hang out right after the meeting, I would love to get all of your contact information, and I will be taking this on personally, as well as all other issues.
Yeah, we just, we, like, you know, echoing what both commissioners have said, we have to find the ends to the means. We keep coming around the same circle, and they're, they're tired of hearing excuses. We don't want to make excuses. We want to make results. So please get on board with us, and let's see what we gotta do.
Did you say you see them drive through the community?
Yes. And, and my thing is, is I don't want to cause any hardship for anybody, but I don't want my property value to go down. And I've tried, um, I've talked to Building and Zoning, and they said, just let me know if you see something, because we can't be there all the time. And I understand that, but when I call somebody and they say, well, we can't do anything until you give them an address, no. I don't have time for all that. I mean, that's not my job.
Well, there's nuances to it, and they do need to have that, just because she doesn't know, you know, whoever answers the phone. But that, that's a minor issue.
But if I give them directions.
Has anything been done at all in the past that you know of?
I haven't seen anything.
Ms. Margaret?
I did see one trailer that had skirting up. They did put their skirting up around the front, but now around the back, they didn't. And it looks good from the road, and that's a help. That's a plus. And I do know that there has been a couple of letters written, but we've got people living in mobile homes or, uh, travel trailers. You know, I'm sorry. We just need somebody to.
And, and I think, and I think that the board has been overtly reasonable in saying, we're not asking staff to focus on, on, if there's a, if there's a thousand code enforcement issues, we're not saying focus on a thousand. We're saying, pick, pick the worst. Pick the baddest performers time and time again. Let's, let's deal with those issues first. Let's pick the biggest blights that we have. You know, I don't think that it stops at the county lines. I think that we, you know, this conversation is bigger than just Henry County. I think it includes the City of LaBelle. I think it includes the City of Cloiston. But, um, I think that, um, I think as a community, I don't know if our constituency base understands how much this leeches out into every aspect of your existence. And, and, you know, I, I had one person accuse me of, of race warfare, you know, where you're picking on Hispanic people, or you're picking on, uh, uh, you know, this particular dynamic. And I said, let me, let us make no bones about it. I'm picking on everybody. I'm indiscriminate. I don't like a third world existence. I don't, and I, and I think that's what makes our country, the beauty that it is, is that everybody wants to come here. But that doesn't mean that we allow all of us to have to experience a third world existence for, for the sake of, of, of a few being comfortable. And, and Ms. McDavid, I commend you for coming up and, and beating this drum time and time again, and I think that we have to show solidarity in this issue, and we have to be consistent with it and let staff know that we're supporting them. And I, and I would echo what Commissioner Swindle says, which is, let us know what the tools are. We will do everything in our power to get those into your toolbox, and, and we need to address this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. David. Uh, yes, ma'am. If you come up here, yes, ma'am. If you would just come up and state your name, please, ma'am.
My name is Odetsi York, and thank you for letting me butt in. But, uh, I live next door to Fay. The gentleman she's talking about lives next door to me. Thank God I have an extra lot between my house and his. Excuse me. But, uh, I, in a way, I feel sorry for this man. He has no one, I mean, there's no one there to, uh, help him. He's, his son, from what I understand, is in prison. And I've tried to be a good neighbor, but I've given up. And I agree with Ms. McDavid very much. And I, you know, as far as I can see, the place needs to be condemned, but that's just my opinion. I thank you all for letting me talk.
Thank you, Ms. York.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks for your patience.
And we gotta keep in mind, too, there's a separation between code enforcement and zoning issues.
Absolutely.
Sometimes they're getting bogged down in stuff like that that they shouldn't even be in. So we need to make sure we have the separation there of what actually is a zoning issue and what is a code issue. Um, so we.
The septic tanks are another issue.
Well, it's different. We, we, we need to make sure that we get the right person in the right place. We've got too many people that are bogged down because they're in the wrong place doing things they should not be doing and covered up. So we need to get the right people in the right places to do what's called to be done, period. So, um, going back, Adrian, I think I skipped over your, I apologize. We have an agenda addition tonight. Well, you, you just, you was looking comfortable, so I was giving you a break. We have an agenda addition tonight to submit the E nine-one-one state grant program. Want to come up and talk about that, or?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Well, I already heard about it.
Go ahead and rest. Uh, motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carries.
Here it is right here.
Gonna move into, uh, business by districts. Commissioner Swindle?
Some great, uh, great things are happening with, uh, the other hat that I wear on workforce development side, and some great growth, and we're rolling out a building construction technology program that's gonna be based out of LaBelle for adults. So, um, I'm trying to get that advertised, so if anybody knows, anyone who is, uh, in need of an adult training for that, would love to have them. Please have them call my office. We'd love to, to work with them, and that obviously, uh, uh, my main goal is to be able to offset the, the old, uh, small counties, and Henry County doesn't provide training and workforce readiness and stuff like that. And so now we have multiple programs that do, and we're spanning on both sides of the county and continuing to grow. So thanks for your support, and, uh, please send anyone our way that you think could use the services.
Commissioner, where is that being located?
It's, it's, it's going to be a work and learn, and so what we're gonna do is we're going to hire, we're going to get on board with, um, local contractors. And so basically, they're gonna be employed by Career Source. Um, they're going to be, uh, working, uh, with, with construction firms and doing classroom sections throughout, you know, the program.
And they're gonna get reimbursed?
They're gonna get paid as they go, not even reimbursed. And so, um, it's gonna, basically, cost, should, should be no cost attached to it, and they're actually gonna get paid.
They're gonna get trained, they'll give them a job.
Most of them, I, I suspect, will be hired on the spot, and the, or we're gonna pave a pathway, so if they want to move forward and get deeper training in electric, electrical, or plumbing, or whatever, they'll, they'll be able to continue that at a higher institution.
Yeah, it's a great benefit to the contractors. They're getting the help they need. They're training the help they need. They're training the way they want them to do the things. So it's really, it's really a good, it's a plus all the way around.
That's right.
Is that gonna be on both sides?
Well, we're gonna focus it in LaBelle right now, but then those contractors will be working. You know how they work, and so it'll be all over.
And keep in mind, the Goodwill Bus will take them if they live on the other side of the county. Just don't get on the Goodwill Bus.
That's another conversation.
I know, right, but they'll take them.
All right, uh, Commissioner Bird?
Um, just wanted to let the board to know that we're working on a golf cart ordinance for the Hallam area, but I'd like to see it go across the county. I know there's already in the city of Cloiston and the city of LaBelle, but just want you to keep in mind that it'd be nice if we could just go ahead on and do it across the county. Um, I am looking for ordinance for Harlem, so just to be aware if you can, you know, talk to Charles about what you would like, if you would like it.
So what, what, go ahead a little bit more, Mr. Bird. Like, what do you mean?
I want to be able to, the community, um, at the last meeting talked about the golf carts, and specifically golf carts. No, nothing else but the golf carts, um, putting an age to it, um, from sunup to sundown, to give them the opportunity to have the golf carts. And we're trying to piggyback as much off the city as we can, so if they just happen to come into the city area, it won't be something that would change, or they'll be cited in our, in the city, because it's different in Harlem than it is in, in the city. So I just would like to see it across the board. Um, just want to give you the opportunity to look into it for yourself, to see if it's something that everybody would agree upon. So I just want to present it to you, to give you the opportunity. You know, once it's written up, you can add whatever you like to add to it or take away.
Like the county part of there, we don't have that much trouble, but the City of LaBelle, they're just everywhere.
But it'd be.
Has it, has there been any issues?
Nobody's complained.
No complaints, no regs, nothing like that?
But it's only, would like to only have it be in the areas twenty-five miles or under. You know, that's, the city limit would be twenty-five and under, so that's the only area they will be able to drive in and everything. And Harlem is twenty-five and under, once you.
You have to watch them.
Mark, can the, can the county legally sell golf carts?
I don't think that's what she's asking.
Well, no, I'm asking. I see a little opportunity popping up here.
You gotta have them ready, too.
On her point, if, if we're gonna do an ordinance, you know, normally, you, you authorize staff to prepare ordinances so that when it's advertised for public hearing, you already know it's coming. Uh, do you want to take that vote to let us move forward with it yet? Or do you want to hear more at a future meeting? I'm just wondering.
I want to hear more.
I want to hear more. If you need a vote, I would move the vote to, to be able to, but I'd rather just allow y'all to see direction from us. Is everybody in agreement to at least investigating a little bit further? Just to add to what Ms. Bird is saying, um, and during my time, I'll talk about the meeting I attended last night in Pioneer. But, um, I mean, that's something that the Pioneer community, I think a portion of the Pioneer community is happy with the reduction in four-wheeler, side-by-side activity that's been going on out there. But that is something that I wanted to kind of bring up a little bit, because I'm kind of envisioning, there's so many people that have their Polaris or their Ranger, or, uh, John Derogator, or whatever it may be. There's so many people that have a four-wheel drive. Well, how difficult is it for, uh, deputy whoever, when they roll up on somebody? And I, and I want y'all to think about this and be devil's advocate on it extremely, right? If, I don't know if the registration is five dollars, ten dollars, twenty dollars. I don't know what it is, but that, that affords you, your, your machine is now, if you declare, it's, it's voluntary basis, but if you declare, you can register it with the county. You can, you can receive a sticker from the county to put in your window or wherever it may be. And now when, when a Henry County deputy, or an FWC officer, or a City of Cloiston police officer rolls up on you, and they see that, they go, you know what? This is one of our locals. They're riding on their roads that they pay for. They, they provide this infrastructure for us, and, and they are, we know who it is. Because the problem that I'm hearing in Pioneer so often is, it's the weekend warriors that come up in a herd, and they drive like a banshee. And, and, you know, it may be a, a number of other different negative connotations associated with that, whether it's drinking, shooting. I don't mean shooting at each other. I mean, just, you know, they're deep in the woods when they're in the community of Pioneer, in their ignorant minds, because they're Hialeah, and in one square block, there's, there's three times the population of my entire district, you know? So, so I understand they think they're in the wild, but it ain't the wild, you know? It's Montura, or it's Flag Hole, or it's Pioneer. And so we need to be able to help facilitate that a little bit. I'm in no way, shape, or form saying I want to do this tomorrow, and I want to get in your pocket one more time, and I want to, you know, have one more method of Big Brother overlooking. But I do think it's something that we ought to look at and put it out there and see how well it's received, because, you know, we have, we have good actors and we have bad actors. And some of our bad actors aren't even from here, and they're, and they're making it very difficult for those that are doing it correctly.
I understand. I'm only asking for.
For golf carts. Yes, ma'am.
They used to come out there every weekend.
They did. Remember the blocks? Remember the blocks?
They still do, don't they?
They do, but I don't think it's nearly as bad. But, I mean, just wait till, what is it, Memorial Day, or whatever it is in the end of, you know, it, they're gonna explode out there.
Every weekend.
And, um, I think you need to understand, that's just not in Hookers Point.
Yes, ma'am. No, it's not.
It's everywhere.
Ms. Bird, on the, on the back, the back street in Harlem, you know, I mean, I don't know who, they have it a four-wheeler. I don't know how fast that thing will go, and I don't know if they're racing for titles or what, but it's like a NASCAR.
I know he got a couple. He got a couple of them, but, you know, and they're working on it, but it is a problem.
Yeah.
Um, people call in all day long because of that, and some, when, when they see the officers come and want them to call everybody.
That's it. They go down front, and they're getting it, you know, and so, you know, it, it's just, I mean, we, we, we ought to give some tools once again, you know?
Remember Banyan Village?
Yeah.
They used, just.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
They get run over out there.
Yep. They were buggies. Well, just last night I attended the Pioneer homeowners' meeting, uh, they were, they were, I think there was, I probably offended a couple of my constituents, imagine that, but, um, they were very upset at the county for not notifying the constituents of Pioneer about a private land transaction that occurred on the forty-two-foot canal. And I, I just, I don't know, I have a hard time being mad at staff for not letting people know about a private land transaction. I, I mean, I don't mean to minimize it, but it is what it is. It's, it's the United States of America, somebody saw an opportunity, somebody wanted to get rid of something, they contacted them and they, they made an agreement and they, they conducted business. With that being said, I think that in the event that we know of any infrastructure projects that are out there, and like I said, this particular parcel of land involves the forty-two-foot canal and there was a tremendous amount of misinformation, I would say, about what's, what the intentions are of that land, I think that if, if we know of anything like that that is potentially out there, I think it might be prudent for us to look at seeing if, if we could, we could potentially own something like that. It's, I think it was a nominal fee, uh, and it, and it gives you access on both sides of that canal, which is a main thoroughfare for moving, holding and, uh, you know, maybe holding back or moving water out and along with, you know, the easements. Um, in a, in a time much further down the road, um, I would like to talk about in the event that that property does come back up, that it may be becoming a linear park or something along those lines, but that's not a discussion for anywhere near the short term. So, um, that's it.
What size is it?
Uh, it's, well, it's a hundred and fifty feet, but I think like seventy plus or minus is, is the, no, the forty-two-foot canal is not called a forty-two-foot canal because it's forty-two-foot. Shane, could you speak to it a little bit? Just a Reader's Digest version?